Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Lower Makefield Township Board of Supervisors Business Meeting, June 7. I will call the meeting to order and please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
Allegiance to the Father, of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation
Nation, under God, indivisible,
with liberty and justice for all.
I'll take the role. Supervisor Granger?
Here.
Supervisor Lewis?
Here.
Supervisor McCartney?
Here.
Supervisor Blundy?
Here.
I am here. We have a quorum. Excellent. Community announcements. Anybody in the room or online have an announcement for the community? I will read what I have. Lower Makefield Township Advisory Council is hosting a lecture series of Monarch Butterflies and the Miracle of Migration presented by Mike Wildbacher at the Township Building on June 10. That's Saturday from 10 to 11 a.m. We'll now go to item five where it says, for some reason, presentation of volunteer firefighter awards. That might be the reason why we have so many guests today. And we have our fire marshal, Tim Chamberlain that will take over from here.
No?
Nope.
There we go. Okay. All right. Well, thank you. On behalf of Yardley Makefield Fire Company, we would like to thank the board, township manager, chief kalusi for all the support you have given us over the past year. We have made many strides into the future and look forward to continuing to improve the fire service in the township. Tonight, I would like to honor some of our outstanding volunteers from the fire company. In 2022, the fire company responded to a total of 649 calls for service totaling 5,400 man-hours. It's almost 80 more calls than previous year in 2021. The following members, when I call your name, please come up and receive the certificate that we have for you from the township. Fire police captain Rick Heckman. Wherever you want. Do you want everybody to stay up? Yeah. Yeah. Firefighter Jason Scortino. Captain Jason Faco. Lieutenant Billy Kansler. Two of them aren't here. Sorry. Assistant Chief Barry Danola. President Larry Newman. And fire chief Glenn Chamberlain. You guys can have a seat. Thank you. Each year, the fire company chooses a member who has gone above and beyond their call of duty. This member is someone who shows determination, drive, and takes on tasks that need to be completed without ever being asked. Captain Jason Faco was chosen as the Yardley Makefield Fire Company's 2022 firefighter of the year. Jason joined the fire company in 1996 and has held positions of lieutenant, captain, and assistant engineer. Over those years, Jason has attended numerous classes and achieved national certifications in many different fire service subjects. He has answered over 7,000 calls for service over those years and continues to grow in the fire service. Lower Makefield Township would like to present this proclamation to Jason Faco and thank him for his continued service to the community. The duties of chief fire marshal for the township have been provided by the volunteers from the Yardley Makefield Fire Company for the last 125 years. Many members have served in this position over the years and for the last 16 of them, by one member specifically. Ken Richards joined the Yardley Makefield Fire Company in 1985, coming over from the Willow Grove Fire Company in Montgomery Township. Ken has held numerous roles in the fire company, from assistant chief to deputy chief to fire marshal. Ken worked in Falls and Middletown Township Fire Marshals offices, in which the knowledge and experience he obtained through help there helped develop the current Yardley Makefield Fire Marshal's office today, which consists of himself and three other volunteer fire marshals. The chief fire marshal role now being assumed by the fire service director, Ken has transitioned to a deputy fire marshal's role for the township. His years of dedicated service to the community is truly appreciated, and without it, the township would not be where it is at today. Lower Makefield Township would like to present this plaque to Ken Richards to thank him for his years of dedicated service to the residents and businesses of Lower Makefield Township.
Want to give that flag? You give it flags. Take it, actually.
Fire chief Glenn Chamberlain is celebrating his 50 years in the fire service this year. He joined the fire company on July 2, 1973, literally a day after he turned 16. And he rode his swin bike from Harper Ave in Yardley Borough to the firehouse on Main Street. Glenn completed the Basic Fire Academy, which was only 45 hours back then, in December of 1973 in Doylestown, called Edison Fire School, and has never looked back. Glenn served in every capacity from captain to fire chief, training officer, chairman of over 30 apparatus committees, and responded to over 50% of emergency calls for service each year he has been a member. Glenn's full-time job was the Pennsbury American Water Company, in which he was very involved with the hydrant system within the community as it grew. Glenn held the position of fire chief from 1986 to 88, and then took back over in 2004 and is currently still serving in this role. Chief Chamberlain has been all over the state attending classes over the years. He has made over 17,000 fire calls over the 50 years of service, raised two kids who were involved with the emergency services field, and has transformed the Yardley Makefield Fire Company into one of the most successful volunteer fire companies in the state. Lower Makefield Township is grateful to have Chief Chamberlain as part of the community and present this proclamation and award to him as our sincere thanks for all his valuable contributions to the residents and businesses of Lower Makefield Township. The police department would also like to recognize Chief Chamberlain for his years of dedicated service. As such, we will present this official citation for outstanding community service to chief Glenn Chamberlain. In 1973, you joined the ranks of the Yardley Makefield Fire Company. During your 50 years of service to this community, you've held many positions and have attained various command ranks within the fire service. You were quickly promoted to the rank of captain of the rescue truck. Just some of your many accomplishments include planning, budgeting, recruitment, and retention of professional firefighters. As a direct result of your talent and expertise, you were selected to serve as the chief of the Yardley Makefield Fire Company, a position that you held for over 20 years. Your record as an active firefighter shows that your attendance and response to emergencies was unparalleled. As chief, you served on the Lower Makefield Township Emergency Management Committee. Your knowledge and experience was a critical component of the success of the committee and the safety of our community. Due to your unwavering commitment and exemplary service to Yardley and Lower Makefield communities, I am honored to present you with a citation for outstanding community service. Chief Kenneth Kalusi, chief of police, Lower Makefield. Congratulations.
There you go. Good evening. I'm Steve Santisiro. I'm joined with, by Perry Warren and a representative from Congressman Fitzpatrick's office tonight to recognize Chief Chamberlain. Now, the first thing I want to say, Glenn, is a little while ago, I was up at Doylestown Fire Company Number One's annual awards ceremony that they do in the firehouse. And they presented me with a four-pack of beer. I don't remember you ever giving me any beer. I'm just saying. And I think we bought you trucks. You guys still buy them trucks? So we'll think about that in the future. But it was, but I wanted to rush to get down, and they understood why I had to leave early because I explained that I was coming down here for Glenn Chamberlain. And everyone knows Glenn in the firefighting community. It happens that it will be 20 years ago in November that I was elected to the Board of Supervisors. And I took office in 2004, which was the start of your current tenure as chief. I know you had another term back in the 80s. So the entire time that I've been an elected official, first here in Lower Make, then in the State House, and now in the State Senate, you have been the force behind this fire company. And I can tell you throughout all that time, particularly when I was a supervisor, we always knew that the fire company would respond and always be there for the community, and there was never any doubt about that. And we knew that was a function of your leadership as the chief. And back when there were the annual banquets, and we would, as supervisors, go, and then later as members of the legislature, we would always go through the calls, and you would always award the top call and then going down. But the top call was always Glenn, even though he didn't award himself for being the top call. And that was so year in, year out, year in, year out, he always had the highest number of calls responded to over the course of the year. And, you know, we would often remark about the number of calls and the fact, what that meant, what that meant getting up at all hours of the night, all time during the day, what it meant for your family, and that service and that level of service that most residents ordinarily don't think about, but are so, so grateful for, knowing that if, God forbid, there is a problem, whether it's a horrible accident on the highway, whether it's a house burning, whatever the situation might be, you will be there, as will all the other members of the Yardley Makefield Fire Company. So we're here tonight to recognize your 50 years of service, and I have to tell you, it's amazing because 20 years ago, when you started this, this term, you're already 30 years in. And that's, that in and of itself is mind-blowing, as far as I'm concerned. But the truth of the matter is that no recognition we can give you tonight, no citation that we'll be presenting, no flag of our nation that the congressman has had flown over the U.S. Capitol in your honor, or a flag of our Commonwealth that Perry and I have had flown over the state Capitol in your honor can truly compensate you for all the dedication and service you've given to our community. So what will have to suffice, and I hope you take it, you know, to your heart because it's heartfelt, is our deep, deep gratitude and thanks for everything you have done for all of us. Thank you. Don't sit down yet, chief. This is killing him. If everybody, everybody knows Glenn, he hates any recognition of himself. I've known Glenn for 38 years in the fire service, and I've never met a better chief. He's one of the best chiefs in the country, as far as I'm concerned. And I've seen chiefs on Long Island in the 10 years and 38 years down here. He's one of the best. He's on the cutting edge of technology. And most important thing, he cares about all of his members. And safety is always his first concern. So, chief, members of the fire company would like to present you with this fire helmet to commemorate your 50 years of service to the Yardley Makefield Fire Company. Little overwhelmed. Look, I'd like to thank all the supervisors and every member representing the township for all the support. I didn't do this alone. Never thought I could. Never would. Without the support of the township, the fire company wouldn't be where we are today. So I thank everybody in the present and the past for that. Chief Kalusi in the police department, we work well together. We've been through a lot and means a lot to me, standing next to you, two old guys in the business. My family, my wife deserves all the credit for putting up with the endless hours that we devote. My son and daughter, my grandkids, my daughter-in-law that are here tonight. I thank you for putting up with me and and everything that we've been through. I'm very proud and honored that you've followed my footsteps in the business. And all the supporting, mutuate fire departments, my friends, guys with me hand and foot here, taught me a lot, helped me become where I am today. And all the members of the Yardley Makefield Fire Company. You guys are my heart and soul. You you make me drive on every day to continue to do the best I can, and I thank you guys for that. My heart goes out to you. You don't know how much I appreciate it. With that, I want to keep it short and sweet. Thank you, everybody, for coming out and enjoy the evening.
You're welcome. Thank you, Chief Chamberlain. And thank you to our wonderful fire service of Police Department who was here to give Chief Chamberlain his his due thanks for the community. And on behalf of the Board of Supervisors, chief, thank you very much. You're a long years, fifty years of service. Of course, you're welcome to stay for the rest of the meeting, but I know you have other things you would like to do. So thank you again for for coming and and giving honor to our chief. All right, we have another presentation, item six on the agenda, the Historical Commission Presentation Award. Do we have a member of the Historic Commission?
Hello. Thank you, Chairboys. May was Historic Preservation Month, and Historic Preservation Month plays a crucial role in raising the awareness about the value of preserving our cultural heritage and our historic landmarks. By celebrating and highlighting the significance of our historic sites, we educate our community and engage preserve and engage them in preservation for future generations. On behalf of the Lower Makefield Township Historical Commission, I am pleased to present Emily and Jacob Pillar the two thousand twenty-three Community Preservation Award for the restoration of the historic Stapler Farmhouse on Mirror Lake Road. The Queen Anne Style Farmhouse was built in eighteen ninety as a cornerstone for the Stapler Farm. Through their efforts, Emily and Jacob have demonstrated a commitment to preserve the history of our township. And we hope their actions inspire others to learn more about the township history and to perform their own acts of preservation. Jacob, is that me? Thank you very much.
Thank you, Joan. Thank you, Jacob. Item seven, we have a presentation from the EAC. Mr. Dresser, Mr. Bray.
Hello. My name is Alan Dresser, and with me tonight is Jim Bray. And we're going to talk about trees. On April fourteenth, the Environmental Advisory Council sent the supervisors a letter entitled Recommended Tree Planning Locations in two thousand twenty-three and beyond. And our motivation for sending this letter was the EAC's interest that we maintain the momentum we have in planting trees in the township that we've had in the last two years. I can think of at least five places we've planted trees in the last two years. See if I can recall them. Twig Lane Hot Lot. There's the Revere Tennis Courts. There's the King's Kingdom right over here, playground, and we planted trees along the Buck Creek Tributary at Patterson Farm to enhance the riparian buffer there. And just recently, we planted thirty sugar maples along Mirror Lake Road on Patterson Farm. So we've done a good job lately. So, um, if anything, though, I think we should kick it up a bit. As you can see on the slide, our tree bank has a boatload of money. And when the eleven oh one subdivision contributes its amount, that'll go well above four hundred thousand. And with four hundred thousand dollars, you can buy well plant, buy and plant well over a thousand trees. So the potential's there. The EAC's April fourteenth letter recommended four locations for tree planting that were in the twenty sixteen Long Range Tree Planting Plan. And that plan has so far resulted in three hundred and sixty-four trees and two hundred shrubs being planted in the township, and that's probably a low-ball estimate. I think it's probably higher. There are fifteen locations in the twenty sixteen plan to plant trees. And if we plant trees at these four locations we're recommending, there will only be two locations left in the twenty sixteen plan left. And one of them is the Reagan Track, the Detention Basin, which I think is going to be planted with trees as part of the MS four pollution control projects, one of those. And the other one is a big one. It's Macklesfield Park, and that has to be addressed at some point. So, um, we had, we also recommended two other locations that were not on the tree planting plan, twenty sixteen plan. And Jim is going to talk about those those sites and the other four sites in detail. But now you think about it, most of the sites in the twenty sixteen plan have been addressed. We have, we're going to have over four hundred thousand dollars in the tree bank. Maybe it's time to develop a new LMT Long Range Tree Planting Plan. That would be, I think, wise and prudent. It could be similar to the twenty sixteen plan. Who writes the plan? The twenty sixteen plan was written by the township engineer at that time. I mean, we could have Remington and Vernick write one. I'm thinking that maybe in the ten thousand range. Or we could go out to bid, have some outside group write it up. And I was looking at the ordinance and where you can spend tree bank money. And I guess this would be up to Dave Truelove to look at to see if it's possible we could have tree bank money be used for this Long Range Tree Planting Plan. It says funds shall be used for the purpose of planting replacement trees at approved locations in the township. Well, a plan is part of the process as far as I'm concerned. So hopefully we can do that because, you know, that would just make it go smoother. And that's all from me. Now Jim's going to get into the six locations.
All right. Again, good evening, everybody. It's always a pleasure to be on Board of Supervisors meeting. Before I begin, though, I just want to mention a little anecdote that shows that people actually care and listen. The thirty sugar maples, legacy maples that recently planted along the Mirror Lake Road have an interesting genesis. When you go back a couple of years, we were doing some plantings at Patterson Farm. And that time Supervisor Blundy and I were talking, and she said, you know, it might not be a bad idea to throw a couple of trees along Mirror Lake Road. So we took that and we moved forward with it. So we had this plan, and it turned out to be called Maple Row at Patterson Farm. And we selected some incredibly beautiful, all-colored trees in a formal alley fashion and had an outside, you know, a firm actually plant these. And the results were actually
I think you need to get closer to my
The results were actually better than expected. And I guess about two or three weeks ago, I was talking to a friend of mine, and he knew I was involved in Township Environmental Commission. And he said, hey, Jim, did you see those new trees that they just planted along Mirror Lake Road? They are really, really neat. So people pay attention. And when you plant trees, I mean, trees, come on, they're like motherhood. You can't go wrong planting trees. As a matter of fact, I read a publication not too long ago, and what it attempted to do was to talk about the assets in various towns and municipalities. And basically, the most important asset and from an economic, a aesthetic viewpoint, are trees. They are actually coming up with techniques now to value these monetarily, and they are far ahead of everything else, any other asset in the township. So with that being said, we had a meeting yesterday in the township office with Manager Kratzser, Derek Fuller, Monica Tierney, Dan McLune, and Jim Majewski to discuss the remainder of the two thousand twenty-three plan. Now, we went over each area, item by item, and we made some changes. Those changes are primarily due to several factors, some of them the existence of now recognized power lines under the ground, and also the fact that we now have a long-range master plan for the Patterson Farm and for the Macklesfield area. So that also, you know, created some changes. And as far as the golf course is concerned, Manager Kratzser is going to be talking with the golf course personnel regarding where trees can be placed on the golf course property. We had originally envisioned a long line along Woodside Road, but there might be some issues with that regarding underground utilities and as well as closeness to the greens. So we're actually looking into those things right now. So what we're going to do is just spend a couple of minutes and go through each of the areas and let you know what decisions we made the other day. All right, the first one is Memorial Park East. So we are going to eliminate the plantings in areas A, F, and E. Monica Tierney indicated to us that there's going to be some possible infrastructure changes in those areas, and she wants to hold off right now on planting any trees in that area. And that certainly, I think, makes a lot of sense to us. So as a result, instead of we're still going to end up with thirty trees being planted in that area. All right, when we go to and by the way, when I'm going through this, if anybody has any questions, just let us know.
Thanks. Can you go back to the Memorial Park, please? Thank you. The, if you went top of the photograph is north, I assume, just to orient. Yeah, okay, thank you. So looking at Area D, the eastern version of Area D, I'll call it D East, there's a long, open area that's mostly mowed, and I think there's some slope there. How far back into that are you? Are you looking for D? Because I think there may be some opportunities there. Actually, both section, I like the section D, I'll call it D West, because there's nothing going to go there. So that we can fill in pretty nicely. I'm wondering what you're envisioning for the D East.
Yeah, well, the D areas, we reckon, we figured would be a more of a formal alley type of plantings right along the road. But doesn't, that does not preclude in another plan, significant plantings there. I think in Lower Makefield Township, if somebody gave me a week, I could find a place to plant fifty thousand trees. Okay. So that's a good idea, Dan. And as a matter of fact, in this new plan that we're envisioning, we are going to request public input as well. So our idea was in the next newsletter that comes out, have a little blurb in there, you know, to the residents saying, hey, we've got this money. It's not taxpayer money. We want to spend it on trees, and we would value any input you might have regarding planting trees in public areas. So.
And I know this is Memorial Park East. There's historically, you've planted some trees in Memorial Park West, they'll call it, just reference. There may be opportunities with a future plan to to look over there again, because there are still some really wide
Basketball courts, you're thinking, yeah. Yeah, the tennis courts aren't shown here. This this looks a bit different now than it did when this photo was
Yeah, as a matter of fact, in the other section you were talking about, this is a huge park we have right here. And you could plant easily another couple of thousand trees in that area. One other thing, the highlights was the Compass Arboretum that we actually planted, and the High Point, which they call is the highest elevation point in Lower Makefield Township. And a native benefit to that is that as these trees mature, I had talked to Monica, and there's a good possibility that we could be giving tours in the fall about the value of these trees. You know, I'm a naturalist at Bowman's Hill. I routinely give trees, I mean, rather, tours on the wildflowers in the park. But we're also, we have a significant arboretum up there of over nine hundred trees. So that's another possibility, and I think it would really be something nice for our residents as well. There's lots and lots of possibilities.
Yeah, and the last thing I'll say since this is sort of on our park and rec kick here. One of the complaints we get a lot is shade at the various playgrounds and other areas that we're lacking shade. So we look at nat, you know, natural versus engineered, let's say, ways to address shade. So as you go through this, and I'm sure you've been thinking about this with Monica anyway, but as you go through these plans, if we can figure out a way to include shade in such a way that the trees don't interfere with recreation, vice versa, to the extent that we can, I think that would to the extent that we can, I think that would, that would also be helpful.
Yeah. After the Macclesfield master plan is completed, one of our aims is that that draws heavily, you know, during the soccer season. And these people are out there basically baking in the sun. So there's a real, real crying need, I think, for many, many trees to be planted on the edges of those fields. I think that would be really helpful. Okay, where are we now? At Memorial Park. The next one is Kiola Fields. And Oh, Makefield.
Yeah.
There we go.
We're missing a lot of markers on that.
All right. Now, as I mentioned earlier, we're not going to be doing any plantings along this road and Woodside Road at this time. However, Dave is going to be talking to the Mike, what's Mike's?
Aterra.
Taren.
Aterra, yeah.
The golf course director. And the director has already indicated that he would like significant tree plantings in other areas of the golf course. So I think that's a great idea for a future plan.
Yeah, there, you can't see the marks, but they're all along Woodside Road on either side of the entrance driveway. We had trees. And I guess there was concern that the trees would be too close to the golf green, the green on eighth hole.
Yeah, when, when the discussion came up, and again, I shared these plans with, with Mike, just to get sort of an initial reaction. There was some concern about, yeah, yeah, the proximity to, to the, to the greens.
Yeah. And you could work around that, not put any trees near the green, which is, I guess I can't point it out, Ken, but it's to the right, it's near the driveway on the left side, to the left of the driveway, near the driveway. But you could put some further down, further to the left, where those blue dots are, kind of down that way. So hopefully we can work out something on the golf course.
Yeah, Mike, Mike had indicated that there was a, a sort of an initial landscape plan that was done for the course, many of, much of which was not implemented previously. So again, in all of these, I guess if I just sort of back up on all of these circumstances where there, there may be, you know, conflict, whether it's conflict from an infrastructure standpoint or from a function standpoint, sort of the tone of the conversation that we had yesterday was there, there's definitely opportunities. And so, you know, for example, as we're talking about Memorial Park East and, and planning additional amenities for Memorial Park East, there, there's no reason why trees can't be, you know, a significant component of, of, of the infrastructure that's installed as part of those overall, overall plans. And so, you know, again, as expressed to Jim, you know, we'll work with you as a staff to try to identify those locations that make sense, that don't again, cause either conflict with existing infrastructure or, or pose operational related issues.
Yeah, we also think that there's still, we also think there's still some possibilities along the roadway. Our original suggestion was not a straight line of trees, but a staggered type of staggering, you know, you look at the ground, you say, okay, one can go here, one can go here, one can go there, but not over here. So that's something we'll be looking at.
Yep, absolutely.
You, you can also look at different types of trees, you know, some trees have shallow, spreading root systems that can damage greens versus taproot systems that are just deep and they don't spread out. So you can.
Sure, yeah.
If you're thoughtful about that, you can, you can usually make.
Exactly. That's actually a major consideration. And we suggested different species there, but like grouping them by species. For some reason, the eye picks up odd numbers, ones, threes, it doesn't pick up doubles. So if you have three of the same species, somehow your eye is saying to you, that looks good. And that's right. So that was approach here.
Three is the magic number, right?
Yeah, so. All right, next. All right. The next is the Kiola Ball Fields. Now, originally we had envisioned a row along Edgewood Road of shade trees. However.
They're not marked up here. I don't know what happened. Yeah.
But there should be a series of X's. See where the little X is at the top over there? Yeah, well, there should be like 15 more of them along that road. So that was part of the original plan. But there are some infrastructure issues there. There are some utility issues. So we're not attempting to do that right now. But there are some areas, significant areas in there that would lend itself to planting, I think.
Yep.
And Jim, as you recall, the EAC and the volunteers of Lower Makefield did significant plantings in Kiola. I think back in 2019. Are these trees that you're talking about in addition to those?
Yes.
And, and when you get to, as you're going through your, your proposal, will you let us know where there would be opportunities for the volunteers to work?
Okay, yeah, maybe some on, on some of these projects. This one would involve trees along Oxford Valley Road. Were right there. Yeah. And down, all the way down to where the driveway into the Pennsylvania Water Facility is. There'd be a number of trees along there. That's where most of them would be planted on the Kiola Fields.
In addition, when we talked to Monica about this the other day, there's a good possibility that there might be some additional trees in those areas because she liked the buffering approach that we favored as far as the back end of that field is concerned. So, and there's also, Derek actually brought up a good point yesterday too. Across the street, there's a small triangle of land that's actually owned by Lower Makefield Township. I personally never knew that. So that's another area in the future where I think we could put in several trees as well.
And are we going to address the invasives on the road there and getting rid of them and replacing them?
Gallery pairs.
Oh, yeah.
They know, we've talked, we've talked about them so much. They know, they know what I mean.
Oh, yeah, yeah. Well, yeah, they, they were, the cats meow about 50 years ago. Everybody was planting those things. And now everybody's getting rid of them. So. Yeah, that's something we could look into as well, Suzanne. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next is. Yeah, okay. All right. And I'm not sure why they're not coming up on this diagram, but anyway, in Fred Allen Fields along Oxford Valley Road, we're suggesting 18 shade trees, five evergreen, evergreen trees right along the community trail. And when you get up to the top end where B is, we're suggesting seven shade trees and 10 evergreen trees. And then in the central portion between, yeah, where that pointer is right now, okay. There's a huge area. So we're suggesting 60 shade trees be placed in that area. Now, when it was reviewed by the group yesterday, everybody was pretty much in agreement that this was a good plan. But Monica had one suggestion that they're going to be putting up a scoreboard along the trail there. So some of the trees might just have to be shifted slightly, but that's about it. All right. Mirror Lake Road at Patterson Farm, because of the Patterson master farm, master plan that's underway right now, the thinking was that we should really hold off on planting any trees in that area at this time. However, after the completion of the plan, there's going to be, I think, really a big, large sufficient areas there that could house a lot of tree plantings in the future.
Yeah, these trees would go where, where the current maple row is, they go behind those up until the Buck Creek Tributary right there. It'd be in that little space there, a variation of mostly understory trees and some shrubs.
Yeah, that, that stream that's going there is fairly open. And that's why we suggested these plantings. And hopefully this will happen in the future because this will really, really help as far as a riparian buffer is concerned and, you know, make the water that's flowing in there, you know, like.
On top of that, right now, historically it's been mowed along the road. So you no longer have to mow it when everything's growing there instead of the grass.
All right. And the last item is the tree row along Woodside and Dolington Roads. Now, I don't know if you know this area, it's up from the golf course a little. And our suggestion was to put 12 shade trees along Dolington Road. And then 40 shade trees, the south side of Dolington Road, and 20 on the south side of Woodside Road. So the problem with this is this area, or rather, this whole area belongs to Farmland Preservation. So we actually had them go out, take a look at what we intended to do. And then they took a look at it as well. And their perspective is a lot different than ours. Farmers do not want to plant trees because what they are interested in is crop yield. They want to have as much land to farm as possible. So the land belongs to them and they're not in favor of doing this. So we're not going to knock our heads against the wall. So at least at this stage, we're eliminating any possible plantings.
Jim, can I ask you, I don't know if you know this, that green feature, actually where the cursor is there. Is that a what, what is, is that a stream channel or usually?
I believe so, yeah.
Okay.
Where they can't farm.
So are they leaving it on, what's the buffer along the stream channel that they're using?
Jim Majewski here. That's basically a conservation practice used for farming, wherever they think water might be flowing, a lower area. It's not quite a stream, but they try to keep that natural. So the silt running off from the farm gets captured by the grass that's in there. So it doesn't flow directly off stream. So it's not really a stream at that point.
All right. So it's, it's more like a wet meadow, is a narrow linear wet, wet meadow.
And it's not even necessarily wet. It just sort of traps the sediment. So it doesn't go into the stream further down.
Thanks.
All right. So that's the presentation as far as the location maps are concerned. Now, as a result of the meeting we had the other day, the original plans were to plant 370 some trees. Now it's been modified to be 162 trees. We still think that's a very significant planting. And this would cost based upon, I think our current value for a tree planting is roughly $350 or $360. So you're talking maybe $60, $65,000, which I think is a significant amount. And especially talking about 162 trees. So what we would like Board to do is authorize planting this fall for the 162 trees and go through the various administrative steps, what are required to make that possible. Either bidding it out or using another landscape firm for the plan first or, well, that would, that would be the, the following plan. But for this fall, you know, there's various bidding parameters. We talked about that the other day. So we would like to see that done this fall. We have the money. It's not taxpayer money and we want to spend it. The other thing is the development of a new long range plan. The other one was done in 2016. And I think, we're not sure, I think that they use tree bank, tree bank funds. To me, it would be an appropriate use of tree bank.
No, they did not use tree bank funds.
It wasn't.
No.
Anyway, I think.
And, and if, if, you know, sorry to interrupt you, but you know, again, back to the idea, right? So we had the, the volunteer project along the fall fields. We had the first volunteer project along the creek on the farm, then the second volunteer project. Like, I know they were really successful in terms of the building community. And I still have family members who took part in that speak about how proud they were to be a part of planting trees. If we're bidding all this out, then there is not any intent to have a volunteer project this year? Am I following?
Yeah. Well, we'd like to, we'd have to get Linda Savente involved in it. She was the coordinator on it. So we have a meeting tomorrow night and we can ask her about it.
I, I'd rather understand that before we.
Yeah. I, I agree with Suzanne wholeheartedly on that because it, it, it is a big deal for, for residents to, it sounds, yeah, I do it all the time, but dig a hole and put the tree in. You actually, you can, you know, you get dirt under your fingernails and have the experience and you, you become, you're sort of a stakeholder in that tree's life sort of, so to speak. So that's important. I guess as you're, as we're looking at the different types of trees, the species and the sizes, some of those, hopefully a lot of those allow for that. Some are too large and require equipment and that they wouldn't allow for volunteers to plant certain trees. They're just too big depending. So I'd like, I think, kind of like what Supervisor Blundy was saying, I like to understand what we might be able to do to allow volunteers to take part versus what we need to get some type of vendor landscaper to, you know, tree, tree group to come in and, and do some of those for us and see how we can coordinate that. That being said, I'm very much in favor of doing a fall planting. We just need to figure out.
Yeah, we've need to figure out where to do it because we were thinking about along Mirror Lake Road, Patterson Farm, behind the maples that set back there. But I guess the Patterson Farm Committee didn't want us to do it yet. I think they.
I think what we need to do, and we can't vote it on anyway today because it's not on the agenda. We'll get together, we'll get together with staff at least one more time. Flush things out. We'll, 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 you know, we'll try to answer the, the concerns of the board, the questions that the board has. And then we'll get together in a soon future meeting. And, you know, in the next meeting or the meeting after that, and we'll make a decision what to do.
So maybe we can work on, you know, sort of scope elements and so forth. So, you know, for example, the, the, the plan, we can, we can actually request scope so that the board has a scope to react to as opposed to.
Yeah.
So I, I think we can work behind the scenes to get that and then, and then, you know, be back before the board to have the board take formal action on, on an actual proposal.
Okay.
Okay.
That would help the whole thing happening in a more orderly fashion, years coming up.
Yeah, I think the important thing though too is that we have another long range plan. I think that's really, really essential. And I don't know, the last one was actually done by our previous engineering firm and they did a good job on it. It was, I think, was an excellent plan. And I think our current engineering firm probably has that expertise as well. And I'm sure they could come up with, you know, something based upon some input from us. But the other plan, basically, they went out and they scoured the township and they looked all over at all these various areas. And they came up with these recommendations. And I think they did a pretty good job on it. Now, we can do that to some limited degree. We have some pretty decent expertise on the council regarding, you know, trees and planting and things like that. But a large job like that is pretty much beyond our scope, I think. So.
I'm, I might, there is an EAC meeting tomorrow night. So it might be worth putting on the agenda for the EAC to look at basic parameters, as you were saying, scope parameters to come back to the board with, at least to get the, get things started and what's well past started. But move things in the right direction so that the EAC can get organized to deliver something to the, to the township manager and staff. So they can then take that back to us.
I think volunteer participation is very important. But it all depends on the size of the trees you're dealing with. These trees are basically two and a half to three inch caliber with fairly large root masses. And it's pretty difficult, you know, for volunteers to get involved in plantings like that. However, a classic use of volunteers would be along Patterson Farm when you're talking about understory trees and shrubs. That really lends itself well to volunteers.
Just so people know, I, I know that Patterson Farm has talked about it. As part of the master plan, they're working with, I'm going to call them landscapers and, and maybe say they're historical landscapers, right? But we want to make sure that whatever comes out of the farm has a whole cohesive theme. So they'll be addressing the idea of what should be planted, where it should be planted, including if we're able to move forward with any kind of walking paths, wanting to make sure that we don't impede the ability to do that because we've put trees there. So I, I would focus on other areas rather than Patterson Farm because that's, that's in process.
Yeah, a lot, a lot of our discussion about the, the larger tracks where there's ongoing planning efforts was that these don't need to be independent efforts, right? The, the incorporation of trees as part of the overall planning effort probably makes the most sense as opposed to developing a plan here and then having an independent plan over here or trying to fit them in. And so I think, you know, one of the things that I, I hope, you know, Jim, you sensed is that at least from a staff perspective, we're, we're very interested in working with the EAC to make sure. to make sure that we're engaging you in those planning efforts so that you're not sort of operating in a vacuum. And so to the extent that we can add support and context to your efforts, I, I think we'll, we'll end up with, with, with a better product for the community.
Yeah, that message was very clear and muchly appreciated.
Right. Thank you very much.
Okay.
Thank you.
Now I'll go to item eight, engineers report.
Yes, hello supervisors. It is that time of year again where we have the annual MS four presentation. I'll, I'll wait and I, I believe we have that digitally that can come up on the screen. There we go. So this is the twenty twenty-three update of the MS four program. For those of you who might be new to this or ignored me or pay, did not pay attention last year. The, the MS four stands for the Municipal Separate Storm Sewer System. It is, it includes all the, the stormwater conveyance from township properties, township roads, including inlets, pipes, basins, outfalls, and distributes it to the stream. That's included in the MS four system. It's not systems on private property or Penn dot roads or even railroad conveyance systems. The permit requirements, the township has a, a municipal separate storm sewer system permit from DEP that allows us to discharge our storm water into waters of the Commonwealth. As part of the, that permit, we have requirements that are minimum control measures. They, they range everything from public education and outreach to illicit discharge detection and elimination, which is, which is what we are performing. Outfall inspections, construction site runoff control. That's monitoring runoff and erosion and sediment control measures that are installed during construction projects, post-construction stormwater management runoff, pollution prevention and good housekeeping. Then also in addition to that, the pollution reduction plan, which needs to be implemented five years after it was issued. And pollution control measures as well. So in twenty twenty-three, how we are maintaining compliance with these minimum control measures, the township continues to post stormwater related information on social media through various avenues. There's, there's a sample of one right there on, on that slide. This presentation also allows us to comply with permit requirements. There's stormwater management ordinance has been updated over the years to be in accordance with the DEP model, stormwater management ordinance. And also there's an operation and maintenance plan that's been updated annually as part of minimum control measure number six, which is good housekeeping and pollution control. So that's operation and maintenance of stormwater management, best management practices that the township implements on, on their own properties. Next slide, the permit was approved in February twenty twenty-two. The general permit expires in twenty twenty-three. We are expecting an extension from DEP. As part of that, we've, this year we have inspected one hundred and thirty-seven outfalls. I believe we are completed with all the, the inspections on the dry weather outfalls. And we're providing a report to the township regarding any measures of repairs or clogging for the outfalls that we've noticed in, in, in our inspections. The pollution control measures were ongoing in our investigation. That is really inspecting wet weather. So inspecting the outfalls during wet weather in certain areas of the township that might have an illicit discharge or might have contribute to some type of pollutant within the streams. So we need to inspect that during wet weather. If there's, for instance, there's the several gas stations within the township and the, the outfall that drains the, the stormwater runoff from those gas stations. We would inspect the outfalls and identify if there's any, take sampling at those outfalls, send that to the lab and identify if there's any contaminants in, in that. And then we would provide further investigation from that. Another pollution control measure is the animal waste ordinance that the township has implemented. And that's, I believe, chapter seventy-nine, sections ten and eleven is, deals with animal waste. And that's in compliance with DEP's requirements. In twenty twenty-two, DEP approved a pollution reduction plan for, for the township. And this was, the general permit expires in twenty twenty-three. Renewal may come with increased requirements. So DEP put out this pollution reduction plan requirements in two thousand and seventeen. It took them, the, the previous township engineer had submitted a pollution reduction plan in two thousand and seventeen. That was rejected by DEP in two thousand and nineteen. We made the necessary adjustments to the pollution reduction plan. DEP took several years to review that and, and, and that finally got approved in early twenty twenty-two. So if you're going by the original timeline, the township needed to be in compliance by twenty twenty-three, by the end of this permit cycle. But it, it seems like this, our, our municipality is in the same boat as a lot of municipalities where they were waiting on DEP to review that. And so in general, the permit term was five years for us to be in compliance with the pollution reduction plan. And we're expecting DEP to, to, to make sure that we're in compliance within that five years. So some of the improved best management practices to be implemented as part of this pollution reduction plan would be the stream bank restoration project at Charles Bay Middle School, forest paving, parking lot at Five Mile Woods, which if you'll remember at the last meeting, we requested grants and put together applications for, for grant funding for, for those projects. And then also there's some regional detention stormwater management basin retrofits.
Andy, could you briefly tell, I'm sorry, Andy, could you just briefly give us an update on the Charles Bane? Because I feel like we talk about that a lot.
So the Charles Bane Middle School project is, that's a project that, where the, the school district is making improvements to Charles Bane Middle School. As part of this project, this would be a stream bank restoration project. We've submitted a grant application and we have not been instructed to go further with the design on that stream bank restoration project.
So you, you need that from us or do you need that once we hear about the grant or is that from the school district?
Yeah, I think we were waiting until we saw what happened with the award, right?
Yes.
Funding application, yes.
Right, right. So it's basically we, we're going to wait and see what we get with, with grant funding and then proceed from there.
You applied for the grant May thirty-first, right? That was our last meeting.
Yeah, yes, May thirty-first was the grant application deadline, yes.
Okay, thank you, Dan, and thank you, Andy, and thank you, Dave.
Right, you're welcome.
And, and related to that, I think I forwarded to you. I don't know if yours will kick back to me, but.
Yeah, and I, I did, we had some discussion, so I was going to mention that. So both Vice Chair Blundy and Supervisor Grunier sent, and I also received it as well, direct from the Senator's office as well. But regarding a, a potential opportunity through Growing Greener and so Andy.
There's a slide at the end that regarding, regarding grants, so and, and it'll be covered in that slide.
Okay, sure.
So this next slide is all of the stormwater management, best management practices that are a part of the pollution control. The, the pollution reduction plan, i- i- in, in general, the pollution reduction plan requires us to calculate all of the stormwater and the sediment that is expected from the stormwater runoff from township properties and township roads and that we are contributing to the stream. And then the requirement is that we have to reduce that amount of sediment or pollutants by ten percent. And so there was some calculations involved to select these best management practices so that we could get the maximum amount of sediment reduction based on strategically, A, where they were within the township and what they captured as far as stormwater runoff, but also they had to be within impaired watersheds. And so we'll, we'll get to that in a couple of slides here.
And is the Mapleville project that we looked at, does that have any benefit here? Is that more of a stormwater?
Yeah, that's, that's more stormwater volume control that, that there's, that's outside of the impaired watershed areas. So in the, in the twenty, in the best, I'm sorry, in the pollution reduction plan, we have a best management practices schedule. And so for twenty twenty-three, we have Charles Bane Middle School, stream bank restoration, Five Mile Woods, parking lot, purviewous pavement. And then in twenty twenty-four, twenty-five and twenty-six, there are various basin retrofits. Twenty twenty-four, it totals one million dollars. Twenty twenty-five totals one point three million dollars. Twenty twenty-six totals eight hundred thousand dollars. These are very much budgetary estimate numbers. Don't let the degree to which the numbers are carried out to, they're, they're carried out to the tens place or the singles place. That is based off of the calculation the DEP had us regarding a certain price per square foot of basin retrofits. So please don't mistake that as seeing those numbers and believing that we did a detailed construction cost estimate on these. It, it, it's very much a, a budgetary estimate for those numbers.
So to that end, Andy, but let's look at twenty twenty-five. You have the smaller, the forty-three point seven six acres, Makefield Brook Basin retrofit for seven hundred and sixty-seven thousand versus the, the larger fifty-eight and change bridal estates basin retrofit for two fifty-seven.
So, so the, the acres that are there are the, is the drain, is the watershed or the drainage that gets to the, the BMP, not the actual size of the basin. So there might be a large, Makefield Brook might be a larger basin. It might be a little bit more difficult to get to or access from the road and, and so that's taken into account as well.
Okay, and when we, when we talk about retrofits, you need, are they, are we using a, is every retrofit the same or are you using different approaches to different basins for retrofitting?
We'll get into that. So like I said, the next, next slide is the pollution reduction plan schedule, which identifies, you know, the four different watersheds that have, that are impaired in DEP's listings. So that's the Core Creek Watershed, Queen Anne Creek Watershed. Next slide is Martins Creek and Rock Run Watersheds. Next slide identifies and, and spells out the Charles Bane Middle School Stream Bank Restoration. Again, the estimated cost was what we had in the pollution reduction plan. We took a closer look at it when we were applying for the grant and came up with a more accurate cost estimate, which has actually reduced that number. But the scope is, you know, there's approximately fifteen hundred linear feet of stream bank there. We can get into that. The benefits of, of stream bank restoration is to less, less sediment transport down the stream. It filters over land runoff, slows over land runoff down as it approaches the stream, promotes infiltration, promotes wildlife habitat, reduces the temperature of the stream. That, th- those are the goals of this stream bank restoration project. Next slide is a rudimentary aerial shot of the Charles Bane Middle School property and identifying the areas in red are the locations of the stream bank restoration. Again, it's fifteen hundred linear feet of stream bank. This would include everything from vegetative restoration of the, the banks themselves, but then also planting a, a, a forested buffer at the top of the stream bank for the reasons I just mentioned. It, it's important to note that there's a stretch between the two ball fields where it doesn't look like we can get much forested buffer area through there. Fortunately for us, DEP does allow partial credit. So once we get into the design of, of that, we can look at how we can take advantage of that area and, and at least get some partial credit for that area. Next slide identifies Five Mile Woods Parking Lot Porous Pavement. The scope of that is to install, remove the existing compacted gravel parking lot. Our goal is to work with the contractor and see if there's stone that can be recycled and reused underneath the, the porous pavement. There's approximately twelve inches of stone that needs to go underneath the porous asphalt. It would be an open graded stone that allow, that not only retains stormwater runoff within that stone area, but also promotes infiltration. And then on top of that would be the porous asphalt. And just for comparative purposes, a compacted gravel parking lot, there's, there's probably an increase in infiltration, ten to twenty-fold of stormwater runoff that infiltrates into the ground from a porous paving to compacted gravel. It, it, it's twenty times better in the porous paving aspect. So that's the whole purpose of the project is to promote infiltration, reduce the stormwater runoff volume, reduce, filter the stormwater and regenerate the groundwater table. That's a couple of shots of the Five Mile Woods Parking Lot and the compacted gravel there now. For, as far as infiltration from the porous pavement system, it's basically restricted by the, the soils underneath. And so that's something that we would have to measure prior to implementing the project and putting the project out the pit. We'd have to go out there and measure the infiltration rates underneath. It's possible that we could put in soil amendments that would help promote that. And then I want to get into basin retrofits a little bit. I just have West Ferry Road basin retrofit as an example, which would be to retrofit the existing basin by installing native plantings to increase infiltration, removing the concrete low flow channels, maintaining the inlet and outlet structures. So this is an example here where you can see that the existing basin has these concrete low flow channels. So if waters during a storm or not a major storm event, but a, a, a routine storm event comes in from the pipes and from the inlets on the street and then discharges into the basin, it basically travels over that low flow concrete channel towards, and all these concrete channels are sloped towards the outlet structure. So then the water flows over this concrete flume, I'll call it, down to the low flow or down to the outlet structure and then through another pipe and into the stream. down to the low or down to the outlet structure and then through another pipe and into the stream. So there's no opportunity for it to infiltrate into the ground. And it pretty much goes flows out of the basin at a rate much faster than it would if it was allowed to run over land or over natural terrain. The next slide is some DEP literature on basin retrofits. It gets into the the benefits of basin retrofits and everything from public health and safety. It outlines the costs associated with basin retrofits, benefits from aesthetic standpoint, maintenance, these are all pamphlets that we have that we can provide to the township for additional information if anybody would like that. But the goals of a typical basin retrofit would be to slow, spread, soak and filter. So as the water is coming into the basin, slows it down, spreads it out, it allows it to soak into the ground and then it filters all the pollutants from the stormwater. From there, again, benefits, there are many increased infiltration. It filters pollutants and sediment, increased wildlife habitation or habitat, reduces maintenance costs because now we're not mowing that area. If you if you remember in that West Ferry Basin, we had the concrete low flow channel, but then the remaining portion of the basin was was mowed. And that's something that township staff has to go out and do that, you know, once a month or I guess every two weeks and sometimes in busy season. So i- if we're planting natural shrubs or or no mow plantings, then that would reduce the maintenance costs. It would increase storage capacity for stormwater. And ultimately, the goal of this is that it's meeting the requirements from DEP. So how does a how does a basin retrofit work? Again, it's removing that concrete low flow channel. It's establishing a berm at each one of the pipes that flows into the basin so that sediment can be captured and settle out of the stormwater before it gets into the basin. Then it lengthens the flow path for which the the water takes in order to get to the outlet structure so that it has an opportunity to infiltrate into the ground, but also the plantings can filter out any pollutants or any trash from that. And then ultimately, what what happens is that there's less stormwater volume that goes down the outlet structure. There's more that infiltrates into the ground and that provides even with the plantings, they drink up more. And so that provides an added benefit for stormwater management. So getting back to the DEP permit schedule, these were all the requirements from from the permit. The next slide identifies where we are with everything. As you can see, mostly, almost everything is complete. We still have some wet weather outfall inspections to complete. And we also have a presentation to to give to township staff regarding good housekeeping and maintenance and then that would bring us into compliance for 2023. The next slide identifies grant opportunities, as you can see, most of them have passed, but we did get in the watershed restoration grant application in for the Charles Bay Middle School. And then also there was a DCD Greenways Trails and Recreation Program grant that was due on May 31st that we submitted for the Five Mile Woods Project. But the point of providing these due dates, you know, even though those dates have passed, is to identify that this is typically when these grant opportunities come up. They're they're in the spring of of each year. And so it's inherent on township to plan for that for budgeting next year and keep in mind that that's when the grant opportunities are going to be available is early spring next year. And then there is the extension of the grant for the Growing Greener Grant, which is due June 23rd. That if the board wishes or if the township wants, we can pursue one of these basin retrofit projects under that grant opportunity and and go from there. And that's all I have. So if there's any questions and I didn't bore you to death.
Sure. Oh, our EAC members left, but one thing, you know, this is specific to the MS4 program and the PRPs and all the acronyms that we need for the for the permit. In addition to that, maybe even for future planning, just generally, you know, I think the EAC years ago started looking at not necessarily basin retrofits, but basin naturalization programs, which are when they when they are appropriate, right?
Yes.
Figure out when they're appropriate are fairly inexpensive. Basin naturalization is essentially letting vegetation grow within the basin itself, managing it, but making sure that letting it grow and allowing it to do much of many of those things that that the retrofits do. So that's something to keep an eye out for outside of this program, but related.
Yeah, the only thing that I would say is, you know, DEP, in order to get credits from DEP, you have to do the basin retrofits in a certain manner. I'm all for basin naturalization program that saves the township maintenance costs and also promotes, you know, wildlife and and other aspects as well, provided that we look at the basins and make sure that that that's not slowing down the water to the point where it might cause an issue with what the basin was intended.
Not all basin naturalizations work the way we'd like them to do the engineering to look at that. And then just the other thing for high level planning purposes, I'm looking at your one slide, the BMP schedule where it just gives round numbers for planning purposes for expenditures over the next several years. And they, you know, a million, two million and a half per year just to meet permit requirements. You know, there's only a couple, two or three projects per year there. But we also have other projects to do that are maybe outside the permit permit here, but we're still replacing culverts and inlets and, you know, basins will come up that need repairs and all that. So the storm the stormwater infrastructure related cost per year for the township, not all that dissimilar from the from what we talked about the sewer, actually, in its spend per year, something that I think long term, just to maintain our infrastructure, we have to start looking at both within the permit and if stuff goes wrong that we can't keep up with, then that'll be a whole other set of issues with the DEP. So as we go through the budget process and long term planning, stormwater management, I think that's that's something that we have to address.
And those issues obviously affect, you know, community quality of life as well. And so, you know, unlike a sanitary system where there is a reoccurring revenue stream that you're you're having investment occurring on a on a regular basis. You know, obviously, that that there has been investment, but there has not been that sort of supporting revenue. So I think we need to have that conversation and sort of get beyond just looking at things in the context of minimum minimum compliance and 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 get into the quality of life issues that you're talking about and looking at how we're financing those things long term.
And of course, you know, that's not to say that we wouldn't pursue every avenue as far as grant funding to assist the township in that. Their real costs and DEP has actually been, I don't want to say generous, but DEP has been responsive as far as awarding municipalities for pollution reduction plans, and we've been successful in obtaining that in other municipalities. But, you know, past performance is not necessarily an indication of future promises.
Essentially, we have to plan for it through whatever budgetary process we can. The grants are, you can never assume that you're going to get grants, you know.
Correct.
So we just got to make sure we can address. That's a bigger picture, longer term item, but obviously it comes up when we talk about this stuff.
Any other comments for the board?
So should we be applying for every grant, any grant all the time? Because to Dan's point, there's a lot of money that needs to be spent.
I think that it would be in the township's best interest to be selective in the grants that we apply for. I think that DEP or, you know, DCNR and DCD who reviews these grant applications, they they look at it pretty intensely and understand. So I think if we're, I would focus more on the quality of the application as opposed to the quantity of the application.
Yeah, I would agree with that. I think the notion that the Commonwealth is going to continue to support all of this implementation is probably not likely. So I think we do need to be strategic in terms of our applications and to Andy's point, maximize the opportunities because we're we're not we're not receiving a grant every funding cycle. That's just the reality.
With that being said, is the Growing Greener DEP grant worth going for for June 23rd? And should we have a motion on that or? Because we have another meeting, but wanted to bring that to your attention because you had mentioned it, Andy.
We have, I have a phone call into the DEP Southeast Regional Representative that would give us a lot more of an indication on whether that's worth it or not. I think that, you know, if the board so chooses, they could they could authorize us to to move forward with a grant application pending pending a positive outcome from the conversation with DEP.
Should we just wait? Would it give if we did it next meeting? Would it give you, is that still enough time?
Yeah, I mean, I think we're going to continue to pursue that. And again, you know, if there's viability there, then I think we'll we'll move. And then you can you can do that at your next meeting, I think, would be fine.
Can't do that today anyway.
Right.
So no other comments by the board? We'll go to general project updates.
Just two quick updates. One is the road program. We held the preconstruction meeting. We're still waiting on a final schedule from the contractor. Once we get that, we will certainly provide that to the township so that we can get that up on the township website and get everybody notified. They do, they did indicate at the preconstruction meeting that they will be starting, I guess, around June 22nd. And that would be for inlet repairs and and ADA ramp improvements on the roads that are intending to be paved. The paving they expect to take approximately two to three weeks, and that would be done most likely after July 4th. They did indicate that they will be paving Maple Vale Drive, that section of Maple Vale Drive first. So that's the first update.
That going to affect the Phase Two of the Maple?
It will not. The other update is the South Drive Culvert Replacement Project that is out for bid. We intend on opening those bids on June 20th. And we should have a recommendation for you at the next meeting regarding the results of that bid as well.
Any other requests for updates?
It's only been a week, but any updates on the Woodside Road Bike Path items?
Yeah, so we met with Verizon out there on site. They went through and identified, I believe, five poles that they're going to relocate. This is at their cost. And then I'm meeting with the contractor on Friday of this week as they're continuing to work. They've got some vegetative swell work that they have to implement. They were going to be out there today, but I have a feeling that the the air quality index kind of impacted their schedule. But so they indicated that they're going to be out there on Friday resuming work.
Right. So I think Supervisor McCarthy made the statement last week, so I'll just reiterate it. It's still an active construction site, and we need to make folks know that it's even though it looks like there's a path that's readily available to use, that we need to exercise caution if you're going to use use that path.
Correct.
I think the actual phrase, Dan, is that the path is not open. Do not use the path. It's not open. Don't use it.
Thank you.
And as far as the wood site, the the final part of the plan would be the crosswalk and this crossover to Taylorsville to where the where the path begins at the Toll Commission's property. Do we have a date on when we're going to consider the concept design or are we already working on that issue?
We are. We 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 had a meeting, actually. It had to do with the intersection improvements that were done by the Toll Bridge Commission. And so SAFE was out there and Pendot was out there and representation from the Toll Commission was out there as well. And so that while that focused on the prior project, the intersection project in terms of the signals and so forth, we did start having conversations about that crossing and also I requested the representative from the Toll Bridge Commission to go back and express a desire to sit down and have a conversation about potential partnership in implementing some improvements to 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 that to that crossing. So there's work to be done, but the conversation has started. And again, trying to build sort of a coalition so that that is potentially supported by, you know, multiple parties and obviously with Pendot's presence there as well. You know, they saw the soon to be completed Woodside Bike Path. And so we started talking about potential funding opportunities for them to assist as well. So it's it, there's more discussion to have, but but we started the conversation.
And I will add, we do have the the grant application that we had submitted for that portion of the work as well. And last I had talked with the funding committee, they were they were anticipating voting on it in July.
All right, we'll go to item number nine, manager's report.
So yes, the item on the agenda is ratification of our engagement of Cohen Law Group as a special counsel to advise the township on wireless telecommunications matters. As the board is aware, Cohen is specialized in representing municipal interest, local government interest exclusively in the space of cable, wireless and broadband matters and have assisted over 250 municipalities on on related matters. The primary purpose of their scope is to evaluate the the application, the Verizon application that's currently before the zoning hearing board and determine sort of levels of success based on the request for the use variance, but then also the validity challenge that was sort of a secondary path that that they were articulating in their application. So again, just simply seeking ratification, public ratification of our engagement of Cohen Law Group to advise the board on this wireless telecommunications matter.
Mr. Chair, I move that we employ or engage Cohen Law Group as special counsel to advise the township on wireless telecommunications matters.
Second.
Question made by Supervisor Lewis, seconded by Supervisor Grunier to ratify the engagement of Cohen Law Group as special counsel to advise township on wireless telecommunications matters. Any comments, questions by the board?
Question on on schedule, I guess. This this particular issue is going to be on the August 2nd, zoning hearing board. So we, early June, so we should have plenty of time to get.
Yeah, yeah. And we're in the process of trying to kick off sort of the or schedule the initial sort of kickoff call, if you will. They they have the application at this point, so they're you know, they're if they have not started, they're they're starting on the matter here shortly. So we should have more than adequate time. you know, they're, if they have not started, they're, they're starting on the matter here, here shortly. So we should have more than adequate time. Yep.
Any comments, questions by the board? Ms. Lewis?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, I'm, unfortunately, I'm going to have to leave after this vote for a work meeting, which thankfully is indoors because I'm in New York, so. But we have used Cohen Law Group in negotiations with carriers or broadband providers in terms of our, our agreements with them and I've had a very positive experience with them in general over the years. And they are really good specialists in this area, so I'm generally very supportive of this.
Great, thank you. Mr. McPartney, Mr. Ms. Bundy? Any public comment? Hearing none, I'll call the question. All those in favor signify by saying aye and raise your hand.
Aye.
Aye.
Ayes have it five zero. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Item 10, solicitors' report.
Yes, briefly, there was an executive session that started tonight at 7:00 PM. Excuse me. I think the air is affecting my voice tonight. The, all, all board members were present along with Chief Kalusi, Mr. Kratzler, myself. Informational items and litigation items were discussed, the executive session, which concluded just before this meeting started. The only thing specifically under my report tonight is advertising the ordinance to amend no parking in Wildflower Circle. Just a little bit of background. Wildflower Circle is in the Tanglewood Townhouse Development, which is off Oxer Valley Road near Heacock. When the community was first developed back in 86, 87, Wildflower Circle, which is a kind of a road leading to a cul-de-sac, was originally no parking on either side. It's been determined by the HOA after consultation with the Citizens Traffic Commission and also with the, the fire chief and also with the Chief Kalusi that allowing parking on one side gets to enable a relief of parking in some of the driveways will not impair any safety or emergency vehicle access. So the recommendation from the Citizens Traffic Commission and is now in the ordinance is to amend the no parking ordinance to have no parking on the, it's, yeah, from west side, from Willow Pond Drive along the west side of the street through the both sides of the cul-de-sac to the east side of Wildflower Circle, which is consistent with the recommendation of the traffic commission. So that would be the, the request would be to authorize the advertisement of that ordinance.
So moved.
Second.
Question made by Supervisor Bundy, seconded by Supervisor Grunier to advertise the amendment of the ordinance allowing for parking on Wildflower Circle. Any comments by the board, questions?
Dave, what initiated this?
I'm sorry?
What initiated this?
I believe the HOA came to the Citizens Traffic Commission and the Citizens Traffic Commission looked at it, engaged the fire chief, also engaged the police department and others to look at the application, the request, and it was determined it would be, safety would not be compromised by this modification to the no parking area there.
Okay, thanks.
Mm-hmm, sure.
Any public comment? Hearing none, I'll call the question. All those in favor of the advertisement signify by saying aye and raise your hand.
Aye.
Ayes have it four zero. We'll note that Supervisor Lewis left the meeting at this time. Item 11.
Yes, zoning hearing board, I'll try to make this fairly brief. The first appeal, 23-2010 months construction for a property located 44 Bedford Place, tax parcel 20-046-156, the applicant requesting a variance from township zoning ordinance 200-14 point capital B. In order to increase the impervious surface from the existing 21.3% to 22.9% or 13% is allowable amount and the township zoning ordinance 200-51 point capital B, one small b, to allow a covered pa, paper patio in a floodplain. Since it is in a floodplain, we normally recommend participation just because there's some certain compliance issues that need to be met. Neither Barbara Kirk, my partner, nor myself are available that, that the night that this is scheduled. But we, since the zoning hearing board is fairly well versed in this, we would just recommend if we could send a letter outlining our concerns or our issues to participate that way, that, that we'd just ask for a vote to authorize that participation.
I'd like to make a motion to authorize our solicitor to participate in the zoning hearing board matter via, by submitting a letter to the zoning hearing board about this matter.
Second.
Question made by Supervisor Grunier, seconded by Supervisor McCartney to have a letter sent to the zoning hearing board ensuring that our interests are met. Any comments by the board? Any public comment? Hearing none, I'll call the question. All those in favor signify by saying aye and raise your hand.
Aye.
Ayes have it four zero. Thank you.
And the next three matters, I will discuss separately, but our recommendations to defer on all three of these, as you'll hear, they're fairly common applications that are handled frequently by the zoning hearing board. First, appeal number Z, Z-23-2011, Gangadar Vinakota for the property located 876 Slate Hill Road. Tax parcel 200, 220-045-029, the applicant requests a variance from township zoning orders 200-14 capital B to allow an increase in impervious surface from the existing 24% to 24.6% or 13% is the allowable amount and township ordinance 200-69 point capital A, 14 small a. To allow a 10 by 10 foot shed seven feet from the property line instead of the required 10 feet. Again, this is a very common application not to minimize it, but the zoning hearing board hears these all the time and manages to address the issues without our input. So unless there's a contrary sentiment, we recommend deferral. Okay, moving to the next one, appeals Z-23-2012, Scott Gluny applies for the property located 5 Shelley Lane, tax parcel 20-043-072. They requested variance from township zoning ordinance 200-23 point capital B in order to construct a 10 by 16 foot shed and six by 33 foot paper patio, which would increase the impervious surface from the existing 24.6% to 28.6% or 18% is allowable amount. Again, we recommend deferral unless there's a contrary sentiment. Hearing none, final matter, appeals Z-23-2013, Rob McCoven for property located 712 Longacre Lane. Tax parcel 20-058-225. Applicant requests a variance from township zoning ordinance 200-23 point capital B in order to construct an in-ground concrete pool, concrete pool decking and a paper patio, which would increase the impervious surface from the existing 24.3% to 26.1% or 18% is allowable amount. Once again, this is a very common application. We saw, of course, especially during the pandemic, many pool applications. This is very similar to those. And all, by the way, all three of these applications involve stormwater mitigation measures, so hopefully offset the increases. Unless there's a contrary sentiment, we recommend deferral. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Trulow. Welcome. Good. Item 12, community development. Consider the pay application number nine for the Lower Makefield Community Trail Project to Richard E. Pearson Construction Company in the amount of $23,424.22. Moved. Wait here a second.
Second.
Question made by Supervisor Grunier, seconded by Supervisor McCartney to approve the pay application. Any questions, comments by the board? Any public comment? Hearing none, I'll call the question. All those in favor signify by saying aye and raise your hand.
Aye.
Ayes have it four zero. Thank you. We'll go to supervisor's report. I have nothing to report. Ms. Bundy?
Um, not really report, but I would remind everyone that the ADHOC Property Committee meets tomorrow night. We're continuing the work on the buildings on Patterson Farm and you know, trying to come up with a comprehensive going forward plan. So please feel free to zoom in. We look forward to your participation.
On, on, on adding to that, I've noticed all of a sudden lawn signs propping up all over the township asking for public participation and there's a QR code on the sign. So anyone seeing these signs, please take a picture of the QR code and go, it takes you to the website and hopefully you'll be able to help. And I'm sure once we have Zen City, but operational, that there'll be another opportunity for the public to, to give input for the forum.
Yeah. You know, Fred, there's so many opportunities, including that there will be at least one, you know, meeting specifically, you know, with, with the vendors that we have so that people can come and talk to them. Just trying to schedule that now, so hopefully we'll have some clarity on that tomorrow night. But you know, there's all sorts of information on the web, our township website. And yes, there's law sign, lawn signs.
Thank you, Ms. Bundy. Mr. Lewis? Who's not here? Mr. Grunier?
Uh, nothing to report. My group's already spoke.
Supervisor McCartney?
I have nothing to report. I do want to say that I've been getting some feedback from residents regarding the statues throughout the township. All positive. People are very excited to, to, to see the statues. So I want to, I want to give a thanks to the Arts of Yardley and the, and the Parks and Recs Committee and, and the Commission and actually Department that put that together.
Yeah, I also want to thank the Park and Rec Department and AOI for, for getting this happen. There was a, a great event on Saturday evening, well attended. It was good to see state and congressional representation along with most of the members of the board. It was a great time. Staff was there. Some nice hors d'oeuvres, beautiful pictures and a wonderful unveiling of the, of the artwork next to AOI. We'll go to item 14, other business, no other business, no other appointments to boards and commissions. Item 16, public comment. Anybody? Have any?
You have one public comment online.
Hello, Mike Rossi, Twig Lane Yardley.
You are live with the board.
Lower Makefield. So I, I just want to say I really appreciate the efforts of this board as well as the volunteers to really ensure that LMT adheres to the plans that we have to maintain our township in the light in which we all expect it to be and maintain the desirability of the township. We've had the benefit of hearing from multiple people from the general projects and all that we do from the stormwater to the MS4, multiple updates on the general projects and from the Environmental Advisory Council and their tree presentation. I appreciate that. I appreciate the nature that we have here. I'm somebody who spends an extraordinary amount of time outside. The one tree that we do not want in our neighborhood is 150-foot steel Godzilla tree. That is a commercial money-making venture for 375 Stony Hill. With that, I think it's important to understand my property as well as others in this room reside below the grade of 375 stony. We get a tremendous amount of runoff from the extensive parking area. An additional 2,500 square feet of impervious ground would again not be acceptable underneath that tower. So I'd ask this board to work with Cohen, and I appreciate that, to really work together to oppose this and to put it in the telecommunications zone where, you know, we've made provisions for it as a township. We've set up and, and I just ask that we adhere to that. And my apologies, just want to make sure I don't miss anything here. And, you know, for me, it's about diminishing the value of all of our properties in our, our township. We have the telecommunications zones on the outskirts of the township. We have multiple towers already in the township that Verizon is not utilizing and does not want to utilize. And I'd ask that we have Cohen look into that as well to ensure that existing towers in the existing telecommunications zones are fully utilized before they look to place them in a, in R3M high-density residential zone. The, the one thing that has come up in the past is balancing the needs of the community and the needs of the landowner. This one tower will affect hundreds of landowners and benefit one landowner and one commercial entity. So I would ask that we keep that in mind as we balance the needs of the entire township, the families that surround that, especially those families that wouldn't want their children raised under the tower for many reasons. But ask that you just fully support the plans that are already in place, the telecommunications zones that are already in place and that you oppose this with the zoning commission on the August 2nd meeting. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi. I'm Laura Muldowney and I live at 392 Twig Lane. I've been an LMT resident for over 24 years. I'm strongly opposed to the cell tower on the Bethel property. This tower does not need to be built at this particular location and it's wrong to build it there. This area is a beautiful residential neighborhood. Please don't allow Verizon to ruin it. Our neighborhood is exactly what people seek when they're looking at LMT and want to move here. It's homes on a pretty street with trees and nature, wildlife all around. It's very lovely. The small patch of woods behind my house is so peaceful and full of birds and foxes, butterflies, bees. I enjoy it on a daily basis. If the tower is built, I will lose that and instead I will look at the ugly tower out of every single window out of the back of my house, every single window. If it is determined to be necessary, which remains to be seen and needs to be proven, then it should be located in an area of LMT which is appropriate, appropriately zoned for cell towers. This area is zoned residential, which I understood to mean that no commercial towers could be built there. The tower location seems that it would be in contradiction to LMT's own zoning laws. Why even have zoning laws if Verizon is permitted to build giant towers in the midst of a purely residential zone? You have the power to stop this and I beg you to do so. Verizon needs to find another more reasonable location for this tower. The tower will be closer to my home and my yard than it is to Bethel's own building. How is that fair in any way, shape or form? And no one even lives in the Bethel building, but a lot of people and children live around the property. If you allow this unsightly huge tower to be built, you are taking away significantly, significant property value from my neighbors and me. Please also remember that the tower requires support structures which include a 2,500, 2,500 square foot area, which is fenced in by an eight-foot chain-linked fence. Diesel machines are inside of the fenced-in area. This is unfathomably ugly. And to build this in a residential area is just not right. I also just want to mention the huge number of bats that we have on Twig Lane, which will be devastated by the tower. Bats are a crucial member of our ecosystem. And they have no voice here as you decide their fate. In addition, we have many species of birds in our yard in, including the peregrine falcon, which is a protected species, not endangered, but protected. Who is protecting the birds and the bats? And the other important wildlife? It's up to you to protect them. I invite you as my elected representatives to come to my home anytime. I work from home. I'm always around. You can personally view how a cell tower would destroy my peaceful home in our little slice of LMT. I implore you to oppose Verizon's quest to build a cellphone tower at this location. Thank you for doing the right thing here.
Since my wife had the courage to come up here, I'll do the same. I'm Jack Muldowney and I'm just going to give you a little history lesson that you already know about. We've been through this drill before. This happened in 2010 and 2011. And this board participated and opposed cell tower in an area which didn't belong for the same zoning area. Then last year in April of 2022, this board voted unanimously to participate and oppose a variance again in a residential area. How are we any different? We are a residential neighborhood. We have a, a distinct peaceful, quiet area where there's nothing else there but a cul-de-sac and a synagogue and we're our neighbors who live in peace with. We deserve the same type of protection that other neighborhoods have been given by the board. I know that you fired the Cohen Law Group, but I'm not quite sure what the scope and purpose is. But I hope it is to exhaust other possibilities than. possibilities than changing the nature of a neighborhood. There, I can't imagine that this is what you want for our community, that you want to have continued towers to destroy neighborhoods. And I know that you will consult with them and they will be your counsel and you'll seek, uh, advice from them, but ultimately you are our representatives. And we ask you to act on our behalf and, um, thank you for your time and I appreciate earlier on, uh, there was people who are honored, uh, the firemen, uh, for their service. And I think you deserve some respect too for the time that you spend in, uh, representing our community. And that includes our neighborhood and other neighborhoods within this community. We thank you for what you've done in the past. We ask that you continue on with that protection. Thank you.
Lady and, and gentlemen, I appreciate the opportunity to comment. Uh, my name is Larry Smith. Um, our family lives at three eighty-six Twig Lane. Uh, our, our property is adjacent to many of the, uh, many of the neighbors that have the same concerns that we have, my family has. We, um, we've been, uh, concerned for quite some time after hearing this about the, uh, the, the potential of, of this being constructed, this, this cell tower being constructed. And we really feel that we would be negatively impacted for a very, very long time. Something like this is a permanent structure. No plans in the, in the near future if put up to ever tear it down. So we have to deal with that, uh, day in, day out, if it were to be put in. As a concerned citizen and considering the proximity of my property that I own and all, I really ask the board to deeply consider the, the others that have spoken and others that may speak on the behalf of our concerns now and in the future as far as, um, looking at this equitably, fairly and with an open mind to our, our needs potentially, um. Now, I've been a, I've been a resident of Lower Makefield Township for thirty-five years. Twenty-five years residence of, uh, Peak Farm, one of the original owners in Peak Farm, one, one, actually the third originally person to, to purchase in Peak Farm. I've enjoyed that for the last twenty-five years. The thirty-five years I've been adjacent to this entire property that's in question. Um, it's been a great township to raise my family in and associated with. You folks are doing a fantastic job. Chief, you, your, 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 your people have been tremendous, uh, support when needed. We, we appreciate that. There's a lot of positive things about this township that, uh, we chose to live in and others, I'm sure in the, in the community would be, uh, supportive of, of, uh, and, and of what I have to say here also. Um, the surrounding neighborhoods, um, I know are, are concerned about this. Um, one of the things that I often think about is we as residents, you know, we're here twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week, three hundred and sixty-five days a year. We go to work, yes. We go on vacation. So we're not in these proper, on our properties constantly. But you've got a, you've got a, uh, property that where this is being utilized and the the facility that want, and the people that want to put this in this facility are there only a short bit of time, couple hours, couple days a week, certainly not every single day. And then people that attend that, people that would utilize that tower will then go off and go to their homes far, far away from all of this, yet we also have to sit here and we would have to stay and have this in our own backyard. It is visible from my backyard as well as others. And I, I really feel that most people would not want to have that if that was in your own backyard. So again, I appreciate the opportunity to come and talk to you. Um, this is a great township. I know you'll, you'll do the right thing for all of us, but I, I appreciate the fact that you're taking the opportunity to look at this, hire the, in the, the, uh, the firm that you have agreed to hire to look into this. And I ask that you please support us in any endeavor that we're looking to do to try to, uh, prevent this from being uh, installed and look at the, the benefits from our side of the fence also. Thank you very much. Appreciate the time.
Good evening. My name is, uh, Chintan Desai. I'm from three eighty-eight Twig Lane. And I just wanted to thank you guys for your time, uh, today. Um, I grew up in Yardley and, uh, you know, for me, it was always a very special place. Um, you know, I, I love the community aspect of Yardley. And so when my wife and I had the opportunity, we had been living in New York for quite some time and decided we wanted to start a family. We, we couldn't decide of a better place than, than Yardley. And for us, you know, building a cell tower right in our backyard, we feel like would really impact just the community that's, that's been built here. And you know, there was a, there was a presentation earlier today about talking about planting trees and I think we, we should plant more trees. I think we should plant real trees and not build fake ones in, in highly residential areas. And so I would just encourage you guys to just reconsider your position in terms of participating in the zone board hearing, because I think if you look at the petitions online, there's a strong voice against, uh, you know, the building of these cell towers in residential areas. So wanted to encourage you to reconsider that position and thank you for your time today.
Any other public comment? One online?
We have, uh, two callers online.
Okay.
Lori, you are now live with the board.
Hi, great, thank you. Um, this is Lori Gray. I am a Lower Makefield Township resident for over twenty years. I'm sorry I could not be in person, um, this evening. But I just have a couple of, of questions, comments. The first one was on item number seven. Um, there wasn't an ask for public comment after the two gentlemen spoke, um, the E A C tree presentation. I don't know if they're still in the room or not. I can't tell, um, if they're still in the room or not, but, um, my question or comment is in regards to the pause on the Macklesfield tree planting. I can appreciate and respect, quite frankly, the fact that, um, we have the study group that's looking at that. I serve on that study group. At the same time, I think there's still opportunities that we don't have to wait until the entire plan is developed before we talk about additional tree planting there for the residents, um, especially the residents that place the, the buffer um, of, of the houses. So I don't know where I go to bring that forward, if I should bring it at the June twenty eighth Macklesfield Study Plan Committee meeting, or if you can get me in touch with the two gentlemen that spoke. I'm, I'm really not quite sure. So I look to you guys for some guidance on that.
Best thing to do would be to either attend or, um, call into the E A C meeting tomorrow and you can talk to Mr. Bray and, and Mr. Dresser, um, and ask, and ask those questions.
Okay. Great. I'll, I'll do that then. Thank you.
Right.
Um, and then, um, item number eight for the, um, the M S four annual presentation, which was a lot of information. Is that presentation ever going to be available online or is?
Yes.
It will. Okay.
Probably be on tomorrow.
Mm-hmm. Okay, great. And I did, um, inquire about the P N C presentation, um, back on the May third meeting. And I, I see that the presentation was posted online, but only four pages of the presentation were posted, or at least that's all I could find of the presentation. Um, so I didn't know why the entire presentation wasn't posted or perhaps I'm just not looking in the right place.
We'll check on it and, uh, if, if the rest of the, uh, presentation was, was left out, we'll make sure it's put in. Thanks for telling us that.
Thank you very, very much. I, I appreciate it. Thank you. That's it. Have a great night.
You too.
Thanks.
Renee, you are now live with the board.
Hi, I have a question on item number ten A.
Did you just give your name, full name if you're a Lower Makefield resident?
I am a Lower Makefield resident. My name is Renee Foley. I live in Tanglewood on Wildflower Circle. And I had a question and then potentially a comment depending on how the answer goes. Um, when it was read into the record, uh, the decision for the advertisement of the variance associated with the parking on our street, it sounded like you were going to allow parking on one side of the street, but after we reviewed it again, it sounded like you were saying no parking on the west and the east side of the street, basically, which would be both sides of the street. And so I just wanted to clarify that you are allowing one parking on one side of the street, that there is not restricted parking for both sides of the street.
Yeah, let me, let me. If, first of all, it has been approved. It was just approved for advertising, right? But the limitation is to allow uh, parking on the west side from Willow Pond Drive along the west side of the street and through the, through both sides of the cul-de-sac to the east side of Wildflower Circle. So that's, that's actually, I think, let me, let me make sure. Hold on just a second.
I'm sorry.
Yeah, it's actually prohibited on that side, from what I understand. So.
What, so are you saying that they're going to allow it on one of the two sides? Cause you said Willow Pond.
That was the plan, uh, as, as, uh, as we understand. The HOA came to the, um, Citizens Traffic Commission and made the recommendations. In fact, let me read exactly what the Citizens Traffic Commission recommendation was. Place no parking sides on the west side, the side with the fire hydrant of Wildflower Circle. The cul-de-sac at the end of Wildflower Circle must be kept clear for emergency vehicle turnaround. No parking signs should be placed on both sides of the cul-de-sac so that no vehicles park there. So really the only parking allowed would be on the east side, I guess, if that makes sense.
Okay, but yes, it does. Thank you. I just wanted to clarify that.
Sure, no, I appreciate that because I, I want, uh, I'm sure anybody's interested would, would want to make sure that that, that's clear. And that's, that is actually I'm reading, reading directly from the, um, uh, traffic commission recommendation, which is incorporated into the, uh, the proposed ordinance.
Okay, thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Have a great night.
You too.
Bye.
Other public comment?
No, that is everything.
Thank you. In that case, if there's no other business, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everyone. We'll see you in two weeks.